A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, take a moment to start this real quick. All right, everybody, let's go ahead and get this thing started a little bit early, but we had a little bit of mistake, no big deal. So on the plus side, that means we'll get out a little bit early, hopefully. So, uh, we've got some minutes, where were those at? Trying to get myself gathered here. Right here. Does everybody have a copy?
In the past, please. We've already did.
Oh, there he is. Okay.
Laceration, don't you see that?
Pardon?
Exactly, laceration.
Does anybody have any questions on the minutes or anything?
Uh, well, we just got the executive.
Oh, you just did?
Yeah, he might give us just a second.
Go ahead and read over for a minute, if anybody has any questions, let me know, and once you're done, let me know, and we'll kind of move on. Okay, everybody had a chance to look at those, your minutes and everything?
Make the motion to exempt the open and closed session minutes both.
Okay, Mark, anybody second?
Dean seconds it.
Paul will go down there.
Yep. How do you say it?
Yes.
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 Yeah.
All right. We have approved that, we'll move on to the next thing, so next we're gonna go ahead and call, uh, Chief Gibbons from the Fire Department, give his report, please.
All right, how are y'all this early evening? Um, so for the month of August, we ran a hundred and seven calls, which, uh, puts us annual, for the annual total, uh, as of today, one thousand forty-four calls, with, uh, about four months left in the year, so. Uh, I think we're on pace to beat the thirteen ninety-five that we ran last year, so.
I mean, did you say it's up to you right now, sorry?
Uh, oh, one thousand forty-four.
Is that good or bad?
It's a lot of calls. We're busy.
I think what it was our highest record, fourteen hundred for a year, and so you're getting close to.
We did thirteen ninety-five last year.
Yeah.
So, yeah. Um, we, uh, put on and completed that Instructor One class that I told you guys about, I think a couple of meetings ago. Um, everyone that was in the class that's taken the state test so far, the written part of it has passed, so I think they got the info they needed. Um, Fire One and Two class is going really well also, uh, I'm very pleased with the progress the students are making. Um, we've had, uh, the hazardous materials portion of it completed. Uh, again, everybody that has reported back to me that they've signed up and taken the written test have passed, so. Uh, we have a couple of new things in that, awareness and ops certified people on our department, uh, as well as other departments that got in on the class. Um, last month, we taught, uh, we were contacted and taught CPR to eleven staff members at the, uh, Mountain Grove Prishing Academy. Um, you know, that's just valuable, vital training that I think all teachers should have, honestly. Um, so we're pretty happy about that, uh, still taking, uh, you know, requests for classes and whatnot.
You haven't taught one for the staff out at the senior center, have you?
Yes.
Have you?
Yes, yeah, we did that in February.
That was pretty much all city staff at that time, wasn't it?
Yeah, yeah, I think there was thirty of them.
Yeah.
Total. Um, actually, I think sometime this week, we're gonna be teaching CPR to, uh, unique services on Friday. Uh, and then I think Wednesday, we're gonna do, um, was it Norwood Fire, I think they've got four or five people that need it, so we're gonna teach them as well. So, uh, you know, just try to extend that branch out to the neighbors and train you up. Um, I'm currently working on the, uh, fire prevention presentations that we're gonna be doing in October. Uh, this year's topic is, uh, the theme is charge into safety, the lithium ion batteries in home, uh, which ties into the lithium ion battery class that we took at our station.
Which ironically, we had a situation, what, a week later?
Yeah, week, week and a half, something like that, yeah, it was crazy. Um, but you would be surprised the amount of lithium ion batteries in your house right now, that you don't even think about. I'm sure every one of us has one in our pocket right now.
Laptops included.
I have two. Um, but that's, uh, that's pretty much all I have for this month, we're just, we're keeping going with the training, keeping going with the, making sure everybody's pulling on the rope, so. Does anybody have any questions for me?
No. I agree today.
All right.
Chief, thank you very much. All right, we're gonna ask for Chief Bloodson to come up and give his report.
Good evening. We had a pretty decent month, I think we answered eight hundred and sixty-some calls for services last month. Um, it's about average for us, eight hundred to a thousand calls.
Danny, is your speaker on?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, and you'll have to excuse me, my allergies are absolutely killing me, so. Um, this last week, I said, um, Master Patrolman Kyle Champion, he went through field training school, um, which is a valuable school for us because he can come back and, um, he's kind of the guy that's gonna be doing our field training officer, or he's gonna be our field training officer for all of our new, our new recruits when we get those, if we have openings. Um, so, he got to experience a forty-hour school, learning all the latest and greatest techniques on getting individuals trained. Um, this next, this next two weeks, I have, uh, an officer that will be, um, going to recertification on TASER class, so, it's not something I really look forward to, but, um, it's, it's a good class for him to be able to teach us and get us recertified. I did receive a grant this last week for a new LiveScan instrument, which is a digital fingerprint, uh, so we can do fingerprints. But we have one now, but our, our instrument right now is about eight years old, and it works about twenty-five percent of the time. So it's a, it's a much-needed upgrade that we're, we're able to get, and I'm, I'm very thankful for that grant. And, uh, it was borderline, I had to do a lot of communication with them, letting them know, because we're supposed to meet a certain criteria on fingerprints per year, and I'm like, well, that's hard to do when it's not working, so, I'm very glad that we, we, we've got that coming in the next couple of months. Um, really, that's about, oh, we, and this is something that I don't really wanna, it's not a, uh, something that's a great topic, but, um, this last month, our methamphetamine rates are up quite a bit, and I'm hoping that's not a trend that we're starting to see again, but we've made several this month, so.
I do have a question, you guys are holding a golf tournament, correct, for Shop With Hero? Can you make sure and get that out?
Yes, October fourth.
On what date?
October fourth, it's a two-man scramble, and, uh,
How much is it per team?
What's that?
How much is it per team?
Hundred dollars per team. And all benefi- or all proceeds go to Shop With Hero.
Where can people sign up for that?
Um, golf course.
Golf course?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, that'll be a great time praying for good weather for that, that day, so.
It's a scramble, nobody cares.
Well, we'll see, but come out and be a part of it, so. And as always, especially when it's, it comes time for the actual event, you guys are always welcome to attend it.
You guys haven't been, I encourage you to go, it's a very touching event.
Yeah, a lot of those kids, you know, they, uh, they don't wanna get anything for themselves, they wanna shop for their families, so.
I'd like to commend the chief, over the weekend, we had a funeral of our, one of our ex-police chiefs and one of our employees' dads, you guys did a great job.
Thank you, sir.
The procession, the show of love.
Thank you.
I appreciate that.
He was a great man, good chief.
Yes, he was.
So.
Any other questions for?
I do, I have one. On this nuisance tracker, I cannot read that.
Okay.
I don't know, maybe it's me, but I put on my readers and I still can't.
This time it is PDF and sometimes it's both, PDF and an Excel file, and Excel file can zoom in, this one gets blurry.
I will start making sure I send both, because we had issues with the Excel part of it, but.
And it could even be, if we want to do a PDF, just do the port that's most, most recent, because it's gonna get that whole thing, then it, that's where it zooms out too far.
So, when I, when I did check it, you could zoom on it or zoom in on it?
Then you could see it?
Yes.
Well, I tried that and I've.
It's just as hard as when you zoom, it, it doesn't, it just gets blurrier, I don't know, for some reason, maybe it's lowered the resolution when it went through Google, I, I don't know.
Yeah, I checked it before I, before I attached it to, to the divorce's email, I, I made sure that I could do that, and it could, so I don't know what happened.
We can maybe have Bobby take a look at that before the, the next council meeting, see if he can give us any guidance. We'll try to get it fixed, boy.
But I can promise you there's a bunch on there.
Yeah.
So.
That seems to be going pretty good with the nuisance, right?
Oh, yes, and last month, I, uh, gave you that, I had three on a list, and that camper trailer over there on the south, uh, by that flea market on South Ninety-Five, what did you find out, or?
You know, I, I have to go back and check, but I really don't remember, and, and unfortunately, I mean, and I don't know if you all know how that process works, um, you know, we, we, we make contact, we have to give them ten days to do, to get things in order, if they do not, he goes back and issues a summons, or if they've made any type of progress, sometimes they'll extend that time just a little bit, but then we, when on the citation part, it's sixty days out, that's what the court wants us to write, so, because they don't want us just flooding their, their court system.
Well, I, do you know if they put up a deposit for water?
I'd have, that's, that's, that's not in my realm.
Don't know about that either, okay. Yeah, okay. Okay, I was just, you know, thinking that.
But I'll be happy to check over there, if you wanna get with me after the meeting.
Is there anything we can do to change the, uh, timeframe where it's more reasonable?
No, I think it's pretty much set by statute, so, there's hopes that we have to jump through, and unfortunately, I mean, Larry does a great job, and I'm not just patting him on the back, but his staff does a great job on, you know, right before court, hey, drive by these, this is what we have pending still, drive by and make sure there's not any changes on it, and we try to accommodate that to make sure.
Any other questions for Danny? All right.
All right, thank you.
All right, well, you wanna go ahead and get the senior report, I'll wait, we'll let her get sit down, real quick, she was waiting.
Oh, you're fine, go ahead, I just had a tickle in my throat.
There's a lot of allergies going around right now.
Yeah, this is like double my normal.
Mountain Grove Senior Center for August twenty twenty-five, dining room sixty-plus was two thousand twenty, dining room under sixty was forty-eight, home-delivered freezer meals two thousand four hundred and fifty-seven, so that makes the monthly meal total of four thousand five hundred and twenty-five.
All right, any questions next? All right, we're gonna go ahead and ask Cheyenne Smith of the Citizen Advisory Board if she would come on up.
Evening, um, last Monday was a holiday, so we met the following day, Tuesday, here at five-thirty, um, we had several topics of concern, I was able to meet and address part of those, um, with the administrator, and I think he's maybe hit on that a little bit, and we'll, were we able to elaborate, or would you like me to reiterate?
No, you, you, you go ahead, yeah, sure.
Okay, um, so, our board felt a little disconnect as, as far as communication goes, um, we brought that up, we'd like to get that addressed, that way we're all on the same page. We also would like it if maybe one or two of you could come to our meetings, so we're all on the same page, if there's any questions that can be answered at that time, so, um, we can speed up any process instead of waiting a whole nother thirty days to do so. I know it's hard to get people together twice a month, everybody, but if you could rotate, or just do one person, I don't know how you wanna set that up, but just at least one person to represent the council, um, we think it would be beneficial if that's at all possible.
And your meetings are always the first Monday of the month, correct?
Correct, they're always the week before yours, except it was a holiday, so we met the next day on Tuesday, correct?
And they're at five-thirty usually?
Five-thirty, right here, it's conference room. Um, and so with that, we reiterated on our topics of discussion, as you'll see on your minutes, um, our contribution to broadcasting the use tax, we are still on board for, um, we do want to clear up what it will be used for, um, so if we can get some clarification on that, we would greatly appreciate it, if it, we, we asked about three months ago if we could pick three specific things it could be used for, um, to our knowledge, those three things were voted on, and we were told that's what we could use for it as advertising, we just wanna make sure before we finalize this poster that those three things are still the three things that will be used for, um, that way we are giving the correct information to the public.
And that was what, streets, parks?
And rec, uh-huh, and the pool.
Okay.
The pool being number one of that.
I don't know how you guys feel about it, can we push the streets first? I mean, for one, we're going in the fall, two, uh, the general complaints that I get every day are more of the streets and sewers, and are, uh, looking for the word here, because I just went blank.
Infrastructure.
Infrastructure, thank you. But our infrastructure is needing dire need of it, people know that, uh, we've talked several times, we've got a lot of good projects getting ready to come, and, so I think that, um, I'm not against the pull as far as that goes, but I think we really need to focus on the infrastructure of this town first and foremost.
I've had several of my, uh, people that I represent have complained about the streets, and one guy told me the other day that his car was gonna fall in, and he was gonna have to have a ladder to come back out of.
We've had some potholes, the, the, the reality is, the pools are want, the streets are in need, and so we have to kind of weigh our options here, and we've really got to fix our streets, our water system, um, I know for a fact, speaking as a firefighter, if we can get our waters deal fixed, you know, that's gonna help us with our ISO rating eventually, and that's gonna save taxpayers literal money, I mean, not just saying that, they will literally save money, so.
What was that last sentence, we got what fixed?
Uh, like water system, through our hydrants and stuff like that?
But that's not a street, that's water.
But it's still in the water category, I mean, that, we have dilapidated old system.
I don't think we can use that for water.
Can't use that for that.
To sustain itself, water.
Okay, so I'm correct on that, thank you for catching that, so don't discourage that last part, we didn't hear that?
That's because we already received grants, and it has its own for water, sewage, correct?
Yes, sewer, sewer and water has its own.
Okay, okay.
But, so.
Okay.
So streets and stuff, but if we just do that, that's all I'm asking, just kind of rearrange it, right now, we really gotta get the.
And so, we as a board, we understand that, and we see that that's the fluctuation that's going, we just need confirmation from you guys to confirm that, whether it's an initial yes, or a voting, whatever you're about.
As we can see from last month, and the exercise Rick did, this board is miles apart on, so, on where we're gonna land on that. So, we wanna give you something, but it's like.
Yes.
I think we can give them something, I mean, we, I mean, can't really keep putting it off, but, I mean, we know what we need, we know where we're at.
I think the mayor's right, I mean, for six million bucks on a pool, how many streets could we do that?
And, so, I'm just gonna suggest, I'm not saying what we have to, I would suggest that we just, let's just fix this now, so Cheyenne knows what to go back to, so they have a plan, because we're putting stuff off, and that's just not getting us anywhere, so my suggestion is we put streets first, parks and wrecks, and then pool, and what do you guys think?
I think we should do a ratio, it's forty-five percent streets, twenty-five, thirty-five percent pool, ten percent parks.
Well, I don't think we're gonna give a percentage, really.
Well, I'm just saying, if it's a five-year looking right here, we got, we get to look at our money in the next couple of topics here, we're gonna have, just say we had whatever money had come in.
Well, I think she's just wanting the wording, we're not looking for, correct, am I right, we're mainly looking for the wording?
So.
Or do you want?
That, that is, the, what I addressed with you right now is we are looking for the wording, so we can put it correctly on the poster, but he is not far off on what one of our next questions is.
Okay.
Um, we, we could tell, and the board members from the last meeting, you know, when Rick did his demonstration, um, our concept is that it all goes into general fund, and we don't wanna promote something that's misleading, we wanna be very transparent.
Yes.
So we just wanted to make sure that if we're gonna say in five years, we're paving this path to a better community, that we're gonna put some sort of allocation or money dedicated towards that, and that not get dispersed in other funding. We just wanna make sure what we're, we're giving to the public is accurate, so it does not come back on us as business owners, and people are mad at us.
Agreed.
If you're gonna pass a use tax and tie it to streets, you better darn sure make sure the money's going to streets.
Yeah.
And not, not backdooring somebody else.
I was, I was told, and I don't know if it's, I can't remember who told me, and I can't remember when it told me, they said you can't really earmark it, it just.
So we could kind of just say, this is the three topics that, these are the three things that we really wanna put money towards, so we're not gonna earmark it.
Because it's already broke down.
Yeah, so.
For fire and police and half, and the central.
You, you could, you could talk about issues that you want to address specifically, so for her, and what, I think what she's asking and what she's looking for is, okay, if we're gonna pass, you know, have a, a campaign, and we're gonna tie it to transportation, give her the answer and say, okay, we want, we wanna address infrastructure need, and that includes transport, or streets, and then if parks and wreck could be obviously all-encompassing, and, and a pool could be within that parks and wreck, I mean, that's.
But I think it'd be, I don't think applying percentages gives the appearance it's actually gonna be earmarked for that.
I think we should put percentage, we just should leave it at the wording.
Right.
Because then the public does know that, yes, they're getting an allotment of money, we don't know how much, but they are gonna get money for.
Right, because that's based on how much it generates.
Yeah, exactly, that's nothing, that's the unknown, so, I think you guys are on the right path, and that, what do you guys think?
And, and the other issue is, if we, and she's right, if we're gonna make a p- p- promise to the public, we have to keep it. So, there, there almost gotta be some wording, if we did a resolution or something that says, all right, we're gonna fix the streets, because in two years from now, half the council could be different, and if we pass it, and that, it may take two years before we start really seeing good money, I wonder if there's a way to do that.
I think our biggest thing right now is, we're looking too far ahead, we first gotta get this passed.
Right.
Once it's passed, then we can sit down as a committee with them, and we, then we start discussing where, how we're gonna do this.
But then.
Right now, we're just trying to get the tax passed.
The public will give you a blank check, they'll give you a, a face of something, a goal, they won't give a blank check just.
No.
We tried that before, I mean, it was just said, it's, it's by law, we want the use tax, it's a fair tax, all these other log- slogans, but we just try to put a face on it, and we said, these three things are our three priorities, and we make that percentage just how we wanna make it, and it's gonna be a flowing percentage, you know, first four years, it might be priority straight, and then as we get deeper into the planning, it may be a different percentage.
I think we're just getting too far ahead right now, we're thinking.
But we can't, well, the next topic on the agenda is the use tax.
Yeah.
And once you finish your report, we'll go to that next, but if we don't, I believe, I can't vote for a generic tax. I can only vote for a tax that helps the kids buy bus, a tax that would help buy school buses, or a tax that would help buy the fire department or the police, it always has to have a name for it, or people don't vote for taxes, just because.
I think we're on the right track.
And therefore, therefore, they're losing the understanding, because it's not a new tax, it's, we already have the taxes that it's gonna have.
Which me and Dakota.
How could we promise somebody that we're gonna use a tax that's already being collected, and that's what this tax is gonna be? It's already broke down to show people what we're gonna use it for.
Yeah. Eighty, what is, how many counties are in the state, was there a hundred and fourteen, right? Eighty counties already have this use tax in effect, so we're already behind the eight ball. We even talked to representatives of the state about ba- making, just making a, a law, putting in laws where we can do this, but we're getting too far ahead of ourselves. Let's just, make it simple with this.
Well, we're at six months of the headlights right now, we're talking between now and April.
Yeah, we just gotta get, let them know what they've gotta do, so they can get it.
I think tonight, let's just answer her question on.
Give her the question, yeah, we're going too far.
It's another thirty days, next thing you know, it's gonna be in January, and we're.
So, I'm saying, you're doing great, we like, and let's just go with what we just said, infrastructure, the parks and wreck, and the pool.
Infrastructure being roads and.
Yes, that would, we need to get that fixed first, so let's put that as our.
So the infrastructure for our roads.
Yes, that'll be fine.
And then park and wrecks and pool, okay.
But then the, the problem is, just, just so we're clear, if we say those three things, and use tax passes, we have to do those three things.
No, that's.
We do. If, if the pool's number three, and then we say, no, we got you, no pool, then that's gonna be bad.
Those are key points, then we're looking for key points.
Correct me if I'm wrong, aren't they already a priority? Correct me if I'm wrong, aren't they already a priority that's within the budget that we've got figured out now, is the infrastructure, trying to figure out how to get money for a pool, and I think it's an already existing topic.
No, we're talking about twenty twenty-six budget, twenty twenty-five budget's locked in, we got a full year, uh, be playing debt-free, trying to get things under control. But when we got next June, we got twenty twenty-six budget, if the use tax passes, then we know what we have, a potential to have a different sized budget. If it don't pass, we're still under the tight belt that we're under right now for this next twelve months.
Yeah.
So, we're just looking at the next budget year, not this current budget year, and what, our budget was already set for roads, we've already got one or two projects happening on the asphalt for this year's streets. So, we're talking about next year's budget, which has to be talked about now, in order to get, to go to next year.
True.
So, we're not talking more than six months ahead, cause we're budget thinking it's happening in March.
Yeah.
We as a board understand that this is progress and that it takes time to get to those things, we fully are aware that it's not gonna happen, you know, in the first year. The first year's gonna just be compiling and see what we can do, and dispersment on top of trying to get out of the old debt that we're all aware of now. Um, the only concern on our side, on a personal standpoint, is the point that you did make, which I'm glad you made, is that if we as businesses back this, and put our word behind it, and really do our best to sell this, which we all said if we're gonna do it, we're gonna do it full force, we're not gonna halfway do it. Um, however, our businesses are not gonna go away in six or eight months, or three years from now unless we decide to. However, the council may be different, there may be different people in these seats next year who vote on something different, and we wanna be able to make sure that if we say this is what it's gonna be for, even if council changes in a year or two years from now, that until those three things are addressed, whether it's one project in each category or something, it will be fulfilled, that is our concern.
That's a good concern.
So, people don't come back and say, oh, we're not gonna shop with them anymore, she completely lied to us about everything.
And I fully agree, we do need to be, I, I agree with you, we need to stick to those.
Those three priorities are our main priorities right now, like I said, we've always discussed.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, I don't, and you may convince me, but I don't wanna agree on a percentage point right now, because say next year, let's, where if it passes, we can start out doing some of this infrastructure on our streets, and then we might get that million dollar pool grant that we can free up some more money, so, I think we're, I think we're looking a little bit too far, I think right now, we just need to stick on that, that's our three priorities, that's what we wanna do. And we need our community to know that that's gonna happen, but it's gonna, like you said, it's gonna take a while on this pool, I'm afraid, you know, hopefully not too long, but.
And we're aware of that, and with the budget, it's plug and pull and play and what works, and we, we understand that. We just wanna make sure that if it is not your faces we're seeing here in a year from now, that we're still gonna dedicate the money from that income tax to at least one project in each of those areas, so we're fulfilling our word, so.
Hopefully, Big Boss Man will still be here.
Yes.
I've got another a little bit, so hopefully, I mean.
But do you understand?
Yeah, 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 hopefully, he's gonna keep it right on track.
Yeah, we're not asking.
Well, go ahead, Danny.
I don't see how you can put a percentage on there, because if you have a major road collapse.
There goes your money, case in point, look at what just happened out here, now, that's not our problem, but case in point, this summer, what happened out there, so, I mean, things happen.
Well, I've had it pointed out to me by a couple of the people that I represent, that we already have swimming pools in the middle of our streets.
That does happen, so.
Okay.
Okay.
But, so, I think you're right on your three, I think you've got it right, I think we're still on that.
I'd have to agree, those are, those are our focus points, and that's what we need to stick with, and you're right, it'll be his and whoever's on the council, the state.
And we have your word that whether if there's different people in this council, two or three years from now, if you're still here, we will still be pursuing that tax towards the goals, not all of them, not pushing money towards all one, but at least touching in each area.
Yeah, I think that has to be priority, the other thing I might remind council of is one council cannot lock another council into a long-term, uh, bind, so, so you can't do that. So, so my answer to that question's very easy, yes, because they can't make, uh, a, a long-term and, and bind another council.
So, you could advise the council, but council can still say we're, we're.
Correct. Correct.
As far as, the council several years ago, Rick brought up the deal, passed the one cent sales tax for capital improvements, I believe, and in exchange, the due worth property tax, and that was a promise, and every council since has kept that, cause we just set it at zero again last meeting. So, I don't think that, I mean, everybody can, you know, run their conspiracy theories or whatever, but I think our city, when they say they're gonna do something and keep with it, they generally do, after twenty years of it, I've never seen them. Never seen them actually, well, they lie to somebody, now, there may not be finances sometimes to do what people want, and hopefully, we can remedy that, but.
We understand that.
I think we all, I think all of us are on the same page here, uh, it sounds like everybody is, and, and even with you, i- is, we all know what the issues are that need to be addressed. I mean, I, I've been here just over a month now, and, or right at a month, and, uh, you, you know, it took all but one day for six people to march into my office and tell me their street was bad. Uh, you, you know, we all want parks and recs, we want, we want nice parks and recs for our kids, and yes, that may include, uh, a pool, it may include a splash pad, it may be whatever, uh, the council would wanna do, and whatever we could afford at that time, y- you know. We don't know if a use tax is gonna pass, we, we hope it does, uh, we, we, we hope that folks will see that we're committed to improving, you know, that, that's my personal goal, is, is making sure that, you know, I leave Mountain Grove better than what I founded, and, and I hope that my priorities are making sure that we're all able to drive on our streets and get home safely at night, I hope, you know, I've got two young boys, I hope we have the, the greatest parks and, and rec service in, in the entire county, and, and that may be a swimming pool at some point in time, we just have to assess that later on, uh, in our infrastructure, we, we know, uh, I'll tell you something that I was, that I learned it, within this month. Uh, our sewer system, our sewer plant, i- is not in great shape, and, and let me tell you, I spoke directly with an engineer that, that said, uh, you probably got another eight to ten years out of that thing, and when it comes time to replace, you, you're looking at current today's numbers, over five million dollars, uh, now, ten years from now, that five million dollars may be ten million dollars, we don't know. And so that's why it's important, I think, for us council to remember is, is not tying yourself to, to a certain project, just, just let's make sure that, yes, what we're telling you i- is what we're telling the people, transportation, we know, parks and rec, we know, uh, infrastructure, we know those things. So, I think that, that's in generalities, when we're talking marketing and being able to sell this, we understand what, what the people, what the people's concerns are, we know what business owners' concerns are, so I think for you, it, yeah, it's those three things, the transportation, the infrastructure, and the parks and rec. That's what I heard, sorry, I'm off my soapbox, I shouldn't speak that much, sorry.
So, does that, does that answer, I think we got for you, Craig?
I think the only thing that's still, is still gray is, do we just leave it at parks and rec and keep it more general?
That's what he's labeling the pool under, is parks and rec instead of.
Right, cause I, I don't know if everybody on here is comfortable saying pool, cause if we have her say the word pool, we have to build a pool.
That's why I'm saying.
If we're telling her not to do it, we say parks and rec, then that get, we could build a splash pad, we could build a park, we could.
That's why I'm, that's why.
Priorities can have to be done before we build.
Correct.
You're labeling it under parks and recs, got it.
Within ten years anyway.
For me, that's why I'm saying parks and rec, because this council cannot say pool and then have another council in two years who may be here and say, well, we don't wanna pool, but we know we need to improve parks and rec services.
That's what I'm scared of making liars out of us and you, both, yeah.
So, we're gonna put the pool under park and recs, and if this thing takes off and we balance the budget and things happen before then, and we get a pool, great.
Exactly.
That's how I feel, but.
I mean, that's our goal, in it's in there, we want the pool.
Well, that's what we were.
That's probably the best way to keep us from lying.
Well, that's what we understood, we just wanted to make sure that everybody was on the same page as us, because nobody had come forth and said that, so we just wanted to make sure everything was the same.
And we'll try.
We're, we're very sorry.
He's gonna visit you on the next one, so.
We need to address that, because, um, you meet on Monday, October sixth, and, uh, Monday, October thirteenth would be our normal council meeting, that's Columbus Day, so we're actually proposing that council, uh, tonight, you all will need to decide when we meet, uh, but it would be recommended to actually meet October sixth, uh, so you all want, wouldn't normally, that's a holiday, Columbus Day, so, uh, city hall will be closed, and we wouldn't normally meet on holiday, so, that's gonna affect your meeting if you all mi- end up meeting on October sixth in here.
Okay, so, if you make a decision on that, we'll just work around that.
That's, so that, but that's council's decision, I'm not making a recommendation as to when, but.
You said the thirteenth was the holiday.
Thirteenth would be our normal meeting, and it is the holiday, that's Columbus Day.
You would meet on the sixth, recommended.
I'm, I'm, I'm opening that up for council to decide, that would be, uh, Dale made a great point, uh, that, that September has five Mondays, uh, anyway, so the sixth would be i- ideally the time that council would wanna meet.
First Monday then.
That, that's right, because there's five Monday, otherwise, you're gonna have to wait till October twentieth, which would be way late, so.
So, we need to have ours the last September.
Are you guys in favor of that, everybody okay with that, just meet the first week?
I'm making a motion, move the meeting to, uh, October sixth.
Okay, same.
At six o'clock.
Do you think you gotta define that, move it back to September twenty-nine?
Mark says this, Dale, what do you think?
Cause I'm gonna make, make sure.
Yeah.
How long do your meetings usually last?
There's discussion.
An hour.
An hour, so.
Yeah.
When are you gonna meet again?
Can't quite get.
So, we will meet, what?
September twenty-ninth.
Yes.
So, does it still be the Monday before the council meeting?
Because it, there's no point in us, um.
Not meeting yet.
Not meeting after, it does no good, so, we'll, we'll have to move it up.
Right, does no good, right. That's why I was saying, if September has five Mondays, then yeah, ideally, she can move her meeting to the twenty-ninth, and you all meet on the sixth.
Okay, we had a motion, and we had a second?
If that is the Monday before the sixth, yes, five thirty.
All right, Carmen?
Yes.
Yes, yes. Brenda?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, passes, so we will meet, what date is that again?
Be Monday, October sixth.
Monday, October sixth.
And you're gonna do Monday, September twenty-ninth?
So, do you need Dakota to repeat the list again?
No, I got it.
Okay, we're good.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else, Cheyenne?
Cheyenne, we're sorry.
Infrastructure, transportation, infrastructure, parks and rec.
Yeah.
Okay, um, the list of events on our topic of discussion, we went over, um, we finalized them to three big ones, um, so we're not, it's not overwhelming, and we can give all our effort, and we're not halfway doing things. Um, if you jump down to the list of events, we wanna do two at the senior center, one in the month of November. Um, we already have a business who's willing to donate money for the food that day and help serve for the month of November. Um, during that, once we, you know, we get to talk about who the sponsor is, why we're there, we get ten or fifteen minutes to talk, and so we'll educate the public while we're there during that meeting, um, at the senior center serving food. Um, the second one actually jumps down to January at city hall, where when we, we talked about the roads and we had a big meeting here for people to come and voice their concerns and have their questions answered, we would like to do that in January. Um, we would like to have the council present, and we would like for people to be able to come in and express their concerns, we will be here also, and educate people and just use that time to answer any, um, negative questions and help educate them, so they understand what it's for when it comes time to vote. Um, so that is something we would like to know, if you.
Yeah, oh, I'm sorry, I, I was gonna say, I'll, I'm gonna print off those fact sheets for you from MML, and I'll have them at your meeting.
Thank you.
I personally love the idea, you guys hosting that.
And then jumping back up, the third event would be, again, at the senior center in March, where a business, um, one of our businesses sponsors that meal.
You said March?
Yes, would be the third one, first one's November, senior center, second one, January, city hall, third one, March, senior center again. Um, and then our, our free uses, we wanna use, um, the newspaper, the back of the water bill, and Facebook, those are all gonna be free for us, and we wanna use that. Um.
What about, uh, would anybody from this, uh, citizen advisory board be willing to talk to a radio station?
Yep.
Okay, cause I know we've got now two of them, we've got the groove, and then I can call Rocky and probably get to, cause it's free, and that's just it. They, one of you guys can do it, I think he does like a little ten to fifteen minute spiel, but it'll get you guys out there for the free airways too, so, we may think about that too.
Yep, that, I'm sure at least three of the nine would be fine with that.
And if maybe we can have a council member, one of us go with them, so we can have the voice of the citizen advisory board and the voice of council all behind it. Well, that's where we're gonna show united front.
And that is, that is something we mentioned, which is also the third topic of discussion here, point of person from the council to help deliver messages, so, we don't need all of you there, like I said, we know it's time consuming, but if we can get one or two of you there when we do these things, it's gonna show unity, um, and transparency, and if one person can't answer a question, maybe someone can in a different manner that, that hits the, the target audience we have at that point, um, so, if you guys are okay with that. Our, our reasoning behind that was, they voted for you guys, they didn't vote for us, they're just getting stuck with us. Um, but, you know, you guys are popular demand here, and they voted for you, and you've got people in each ward who are backing you. Um, so if you can work with us on promoting this, um, we know that you can't sell it, but we can educate people on why we need it.
Absolutely.
We can.
You can.
Yeah, we can.
Yes, you, you can, but I'm the administrator, sorry, I pointed, speaking, I'm sorry.
We voted for, and that's what I'm. Yeah, okay. I think that stands as a united front, you know, and that's what people wanna see, and so I'm, I'm fully behind it, I mean, I think we should do it.
Great, all right, so I can say that's a yes.
I'm gonna say yes, what does council say to that?
Yes.
I think you got your answer.
Okay, um. Down here on, that was our point of person from council, is anybody, is anybody interested in helping sell this? Um, being the spokesperson for this with us, or is that not something that you guys are interested in?
You mean as far as?
Being a, a face to the public.
Yeah.
I'll do November, I should, for you.
Okay.
There's one for November.
Okay.
Anybody wanna do?
So, just be as far as the event getting up.
Well, we would like all of you to be here in January, that's the one meeting here, if that's okay.
Oh, that's right, yeah, sorry, yeah, sorry.
Okay.
And then we.
Busy month.
January, that's our not busy month.
As much as December.
Is December better?
I think December's gonna be a hard time.
Are you just, okay, all right.
Yeah, I'd be willing to be at, I mean, I'll try to be at all of them, but, but, as far as to speak one time, yeah, if we need to, we can talk about that.
Okay. All right, good.
And when we do this with you, should our attorney be with us too?
Well, I mean, that's, that's your, um, whatever you feel legal-wise, but this is where we stand as a board.
Now, I don't mean just to support us, I want the community to see that we have a very qualified attorney that's representing us.
No, no, I understand.
Well, and honestly, and I, I gotta love Larry, and I got no, I mean, we get along just fine, the, the public don't care. Honestly, that's, they just want to, it's big that we're stepping up behind the citizen advisory board now. Now, we're kinda making a united front, and that's what they wanna see, that we're actually standing behind what they're doing, which we do. So, now we join forces, I don't know that, if Larry wants to be there, I'm all for it, like, come on in, but I don't think it's really going to, in the, in the voter's eyes, make any difference to them.
You must talk to other people than I do.
I talk to a lot, too many people, it seems like.
And that's the point, point of our board is, we hit a wide range of our citizens, different age groups, and so, when we come together, all nine of us have different demographics and age groups where we've got concerns and complaints and all of that from, and we try to compile it all and find a happy medium, so, we've tried to already hit all of those areas, um, and, and we, we do feel that as long as you guys hit this with us and stand behind it, I think that clears up any type of misconception that Larry would need to be there for, that's my personal opinion, but that, what it's for, ten cents there. Um, additional discussion, we, um, we already talked about having people present in our meetings, that would be great. Um, I think everything's been answered, narrowed down, we did receive that, um, graphic, we touched on it. I think the streak, we're gonna replace with a road, paving the pathway, these aren't, things we're promising, these are things that we want to, if, if you wanna invest in your hometown and help this pass, these are the investments we can move and get towards, we're not promising them upfront. Um, he's got, uh, our administrator's gonna send me some information, um, we've checked into legality, so we can all read over it, and we're all aware of the dos and the don'ts, and what can be said and what cannot be said, so we're not putting our foot in our mouth, um, and we'll be all prepared for these lovely meetings, any questions?
I just like to say, you guys are killing it, I mean, it's been a little bit of shaky road, but we're getting there, you guys, I think you guys are figuring it out and bringing us the right input. We're on the right steps, so, I just wanna say thank you to, make sure you tell all your guys, girls, we appreciate everything.
Yeah, appreciate everything you all did. Hope we didn't mislead you on some of that stuff off the start, but we're still.
There's no need to apologize, but that's, that's the part that it becomes hardened with our board, is because we're, we're bringing in not just our personal opinion, because sometimes you have to set that aside when it comes to business, but our citizens' concerns, because that's what we're here for, is the citizens advisory board, so we have to bring in all of those things and try to make sense of it, and get to the bottom and present it in a manner that is, um, professional when some of the things that come on our table aren't, and you know, and weed out those things, so there's no need to apologize, you were misleading.
That's kinda where we're at, we're at right now, I mean, I'm telling you, if we went out there and said, we're gonna pass this use tax and it's going towards a pool, we would all be run off the council. we would all be run off the council, I feel like they'd run every one of us away until we get some streets fixed. But I, I want the pool and I want it to be included in there, but you know, that's what we're saying, you can see where that comes down to.
Cheyenne, can you get with Dolores and have access to our text line? And then you could give us that text the other meeting of the, the Friday before, that way, the next six or four weeks, we don't forget.
Or at least, yeah, come in and remind her and stuff.
I will figure out how to do that.
Yeah, I, I'll, I'll make it.
Dolores has it her.
Yeah, what?
You'll take it.
I, I'll make sure that Dolores gets you all a note, I'll take that, you, you don't need to worry about that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Bobby.
Before Cheyenne leaves, um, I don't know if you guys know, Wright County is also.
Yes.
On this whole thing, and I don't know, um, I talked to the clerks up there a couple of weeks ago and they're kinda wanting to do the same thing, so I don't, you know, take that.
They're gonna put out the ballot this year too.
Yeah, I don't know if you wanna work with them, do a thing, or do your own thing, or you know what, but, but they are working on it also.
Okay, so at least we know, we're aware of it now.
County, 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 very good point.
It's not good news. It's not good news.
So as a county, how would that work, as a county?
It's two different check boxes on the ballot.
The county's at one point five. If, if they both passed, it would be the same as where our sales tax is in Mountain Grove now.
But if we're doing all this work, so we're doing all this work and we can give, have our information, but then maybe also to marry and give it to them in the end, I don't know if, if they get the same information that we give out, if it will help.
So we gotta decide.
I just, I just.
Yeah, I didn't know that, we gotta decide if it's better, yeah, for us both to do it at the same time, or they're gonna scare people off.
Well, we talked about this before, did we, we just didn't know at the other time, earlier when we discussed it, we didn't know if they were going to be on November or April, or the next November, we didn't know at that time.
I got that a couple of weeks ago, but it is April.
Interesting.
Yeah, they could do that, they did the same thing on the law enforcement tax, they ran theirs at the same time, we ran ours and they both passed.
Yeah. That's right.
So that, it, it could be a good thing.
I remember that.
Don't know, we're just, we're gonna have to deal with it regardless, it's, it's gonna be there, so.
The, the key.
We're gonna be working together.
The, the key is making sure that everybody's on the same page, delivering the same message and what you're telling people isn't different from what the county's telling people about, y- you know, and making sure that there is an understanding of what the use tax is and why it's important, most importantly, so.
Well, I think, uh, to come along with that, we need to make sure when we're talking, like, we're getting ready to do with it, we need to make sure and say, the city of Mountain Grove use tax.
Yes.
Because.
Because they're gonna have different priorities for what they're using.
Exactly, sure, we don't want somebody going, well, the county's.
They don't set our priorities, that's right.
Yeah.
Do you know who is in charge of that problem?
It'd be Zach.
Zach.
Or the clerks, commissioners of all of them.
Yeah. Right, yeah.
So.
I'll look into that, and then I meet with, uh, chamber board, um, the week of September fifteenth to reevaluate them backing it as well.
Okay.
That sounds great.
Hopefully, fingers crossed.
Right.
You having, anybody have any questions for her? I think she can deliver pretty good information. Cheyenne, thank you very much. Alright, uh, Dale has got some information on the use tax.
Basically, we've gotta make a decision as a board, yes or no, we've talked about it for six months, so I'm making a motion, we put out a December ballot.
Okay.
I mean, I'm making a motion that we file in December to put it on the April ballot.
Okay. Everybody, we need to file by December to get on April ballot, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Brenda, Mark?
Yeah.
Dale?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Okay, that was easy enough. Alright, we're gonna go to the public comments, Bobby, is there any, I didn't think there was, um, I do have some, they didn't come, but I did have some public comments that would have been brought up to me in Texas and stuff, uh, the caboose. I've had a citizen ask us if we would be willing to maybe give it a facelift, just give it a simple paint cup, it is kinda difficult where we're at. And it is because that area's growing, they're, they're right, we should be looking into giving it a facelift.
Well, it's looking fresh and the little caboose just looks sort of.
Yes, yeah, a little bit dull, so what would you guys be?
Well, our interest, they would like for us to put a fence around the bottom of it anyway.
When you get a budget or a bid.
Yeah, but I think we got around that, didn't we? No, we have not.
So I'm just saying, it could be done at the same time.
Same time, yeah, so, okay, I like that. Cause they don't want kids crawling under.
We've been supposed to put a fence around the bottom of it for safety purposes.
Now, some, that is something we can just go ahead and have our parks and recreation do, correct? I mean, it's just a.
If it's in our budget, um, we can.
If it's in the budget, yeah, we need.
I, so, I, I don't think that was, I mean, it's first I'm hearing of it, so I'm going to make an assumption that it was not an already budgeted item.
They've got, they've got tons of chain link and stuff that they probably got supplies already, so we can do that.
In stock.
Yeah, so we can do that.
So what we can do is, I can have a conversation with Tim and those guys, and then if they don't have that in stock and with something, we're gonna have to amend the budget to make a purchase, I can bring that to you at the October meeting and you all would just, uh, uh, amend the budget essentially and allow us the ability to, to make that.
Maybe I shouldn't have set a fence around the bottom of it, it was like enclosing them.
Yeah, they want something else where the kids.
And it was enclosed once and then they took the fence down, I don't know why they took it down.
Yeah, because we wanna invite people to crawl, crawl upon it, correct? That's the whole idea with the booth, so people can take pictures on it.
They just don't want going on.
Yes.
I wanna make sure, I'm still learning Mountain Grove, I'm fresh, so are we talking about the same one down here at the park, that's the big one?
Yes.
Yeah, all the green and.
Okay, alright, yeah, yeah.
I thought they didn't want anybody on it all.
No, they didn't have a problem with people on it, they just was afraid of kids.
But they is us, right, it's our caboose, there is no more.
Yes. Murma was the one that wanted us to have.
Oh, the insurance.
Yeah, it's, so.
We need to make it safe for that.
That's been an item every year for us.
Yeah, it's, it's one of their touching points.
Well, if it's done correctly, it could actually add to the beauty of it too.
Yeah, I agree, yeah, we can make it beautify a little bit more.
So Mr. Mayor, I think we should make a temporary fence, uh, have our parks director, Tim, look at matching that fence we already have going up the highway, see what that cost would be and bring those kind of numbers back to us and be able to, so we could go ahead and do it right in the next year if it's affordable.
Okay, I, I agree, that sounds like a good idea. So there's an idea for you, Dakota, uh, the next thing, I've got several, several calls on this, and I know poor Danny has gotten run hard with this. Uh, school, elementary, it's chaotic, is it not? Um, I've had some people suggest maybe we put some more signs out, um, do you think that would help with the parking issue, or not?
What's chaotic about it?
Everything, everything, you can't, you can ask Danny, they are, it's, you can't even go down ninety-five during school getting let out because it is blocked. It's, it's hazardous, how many?
Yeah, I've had officers down there making them move and.
But it's, it's taken away from all officers too.
People stopping to pick up their children.
Yeah, there's a line going all the way from the school, all the way out to ninety-five and clear up to the top of the hill, across the street end, so people are getting agitated and, you know, Casey's is starting to get upset because people are blocking their lanes.
I like the sign to stop it.
I, I agree.
Do we have a crossing guard system anymore, or how is that set up?
Uh.
Has a crossing guard.
Yeah.
School has a crossing guard.
Yes.
Does it, it'd be like a ball game where you got the cops out there after the Chiefs game and they're directing traffic for?
What, Danny, do you think that'd help any?
That's what you're doing.
Yeah, they're already pretty much, what about your S R O?
We're just bringing the National Guard and distracting this, uh.
He's there too. So, I mean.
In fact, I've had three or four officers down there at the time, trying to get traffic moving and.
I hate that we have to have so many.
Would that be a one-way street for certain hours of the day because of school traffic going one direction or something?
I, I think that's not. What if you make all the cars park on the?
That way, you go from there onto the middle school.
Yeah, I don't know if that's gonna help it though, cause the line is just so long, that's the problem, I mean, I went by the other day.
It's not two-way traffic that we feed.
Yeah, it's not, yeah, it's not the tw- two ways, it's just, I mean, across Ninth there, they was on top of the hill up so far and so that's much the problem.
Across Main Street?
Yeah, across Main Street, so people are starting to get agitated, rightfully so, you know, some are just wanna go to Casey's.
You think the problem is? Lots of streets there for everybody to go on.
Yeah, so I'm just trying to brainstorm, does anybody have any ideas?
It's a new issue that we're facing, and if you give it a few weeks, it gets.
You think it'll calm down?
It will, it'll get a little better, I mean, there's gonna be days, you know, especially if they have a program or something like that, which is gonna be in that issue, but the thing is, there's, there's ample parking, there, there's parking in the Y M C A, that they've, they've made lots, there's parking down, um, Julia Street, it's just they wanna park as close as they can.
Right.
And some people get there like an hour, so seriously, that's what I've been told, between the lines.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, it's, it's not just, of course, it's not going all the way up to, to ninety-five, but I mean, also, if, if quit adding a fire truck through there.
That's what I, you know, emergency services in general, it's not gonna happen.
Like, even an ambulance would be hard to get through.
Yeah, I don't think, that's what, that's the main concern that I have with it, and so, it's.
You think part of the reason is less people are using the buses, and the school encourages more people to use them?
I, you know, I think that's, a lot of that is, people are starting to.
Lots of preschool.
Lots of people are for some reason picking their kids up, cause, let's be honest, the bullying and stuff like that, the realism of it is, there's just so much going on these school buses now, people don't want their kids on buses, and so.
And you can make it, you know, no parking on one side of the street, that's just gonna add to.
I think.
Add all the traffic one, one side.
That's right.
Kind of all kind of originate from COVID.
Start at the school, just encourage them, see how that works.
What's your solution, Danny?
Yeah.
Know that I have one, I, I, I really don't.
Cause your closest to a problem than I am, I don't think about that.
Chief, uh, chief, do we ask folks, do we have, you said we have three or four officers there, do we, we have an officer there that's making sure and, and asking them to park in the parking lot?
And trying to make it, you know, and, and pay, and, and of course, you have to go down the street, wait and come back around and.
Try to get through.
Got you. I understand, yeah.
You know, it's not, they're not, they're not trying to get things going, cause.
Are some of them waiting in line though to get into the drop-off pickups, like, they have a blue lot, they had, cause they just bought that other house so they could enlarge that area and they, they pull in to go out, to go around, I mean, and then they have two, a red and a green that goes in front, it's a big. You should go visit it sometime and watch, then watch how, how it works, I mean, I think they're doing the best they can with it.
Yeah.
So we're going our officers to do the school stuff.
It'd be terrible if you're going north on ninety-five.
Yeah.
All these people are parked up in Ninth Street, all up over that hill, they've already been in line, and then those people in ninety, coming off ninety-five just cut in front of them.
Yeah, well, it's the same way at the middle school, because, yeah.
I'll visit, I'll visit with Danny and see if we can't figure out some sort of plan, just to, maybe, I mean, we, we can talk, maybe there isn't a solution, but, uh, Danny and I can try to figure out something.
Alright, so for the ones that have called me on the cell phone if they're watching tonight, we are working on it, we are gonna see what we can do. And, uh, with that, I don't have any new public comments, does anybody else, we're thinking of it? Are we good? So we're gonna move on. Alright, uh, old business, the swimming pool, uh, Jamie's not here, does anybody have anything on that? Or are we just gonna tabletop that for right now?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'm moving table the pool until April meeting.
Do we have a second? We have a second there?
Yes.
Okay, I'll comment.
Uh, so we won't discuss the pool anymore until April?
Well, there's nothing we can do until April.
Honestly, yeah.
I mean, we've got construction, but we ain't gonna do construction.
I'm just for tonight at least.
How deep it's gonna be, but we're not gonna change it, so I'm just, uh.
We need to at some point, uh, discuss, I'm assuming it will be you, Dakota, who will reach out to Landmark Aquatics, just to let them know.
Yeah, we, we, yeah, once you all decide, I mean, that's.
Where we're at.
It's, it's at the top of the burner for April, but it's the top of the burner for October.
And I think they kinda know, they, they know they're gonna get to this point and then we had to fundraise.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But it might be nice to tell them, but, yeah.
I told him, I didn't think I would be surprised, but we need to, so we won't just leave him out there, I mean.
Yeah, I think that's just a, just a courtesy.
Yeah, just a courtesy.
Yeah.
When they have a partial, that's a waste of.
Wait on you to vote, yeah.
Here's a second, Brenda, so Mark, what do you, you, oh, we got Carmen, right?
Uh, yes.
Okay, Zach?
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Yes.
We're good to go.
And I will notify Landmark Aquatics that we have, have voted to table it till A- at least April, so.
After election.
Appreciate your design, yeah.
Uh, next, uh, Dakota's gonna take over for the next bill?
Yeah, excuse me.
We'll let him finish up. Guys, I don't know if you noticed, but we're on record timing, you guys are gonna be able to get home before sundown if we keep on going like this.
We're not in a hurry, we got to midnight.
Don't jinx it.
Dale?
We're living in a hurry.
We might go, can we go have a conversation in the bathroom, and then we'll go recess?
Dale, you can sit here to midnight.
Yeah, you're. I'm still hungry, I want dinner.
Yeah, so, um, actually, so you all will need to, uh, somebody will need to make a motion to, do the second reading, yeah.
Mark, motion, you got a second, do you have seconds? Mark? Dale?
I wonder what, what it is, will you, Timmy, or explain it to me?
I'm, I'm sorry, so this will be for the second reading of.
Oh, we're just going on a motion.
Yeah, just a motion, a second reading.
To, to do, to do the reading, yeah.
Yes.
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 Alright, this is the second reading, bill number twenty twenty-five dash oh nine, ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash oh nine, and ordinance of Mountain Grove, Missouri, establishing a procedure to disclose potential conflicts of interest and substantial interest for certain officials. So this was that, what we're doing, just to bring us in line with the state, the state's requiring, so we have to disclose.
Is this employees or just elected officials?
It, uh, it's, uh, for, uh, Danny, correct me if I'm wrong, it's for employees and for, um, for officials too, yes, yes, for both.
And you all says there.
It's all encompassing, yes, uh.
I'm making a motion to accept it.
What does it say? I, I missed the first reading last month, I didn't.
I'm, I'm sorry.
I missed my discussion, so I'm way behind.
I, I'm sorry, so this is.
I guess I should have read it more than my.
No, that's okay, I'm sorry, uh, we.
It's kinda what we did, what we're kinda doing already, but Rick just said it was something that wasn't in stone and.
Right, we have to disclose, right, we have to disclose conflicts of interest, so for example, making sure that, uh, if, if your brother owns a paving company and we, uh, hire your brother to pave our streets, we had to, we, we must make a disclosure that, you know, Joe Smith was, was your brother and he has a paving company, so it really is, that's about as basic, we already, that's right.
We are.
Right, this just brings you in line with the state statute.
Does that disclose that like now, everybody I do business with or know, or is that only, if that topic comes up in six months, we start bidding asphalt up, then I disclose it?
Yeah, I mean, you, you, you know, I think it's in good faith, I think a, a lot of it is, is just in good faith, and Larry, this may be something you wanna, I don't know, touch on, but, but it really is, yeah, as things come up, if, you know, we're gonna be paving a street, your bro, again, your brother has a, a paving company, then y- you would need to disclose that, that, okay, hey, we're, you know, we're voting on this, or we're gonna take that up, that matter, then you would have to disclose that.
At that time, not now.
Ri- right, right, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I think as it, as you become aware, yeah, again, acting in good faith, as you become aware of an issue, hey, I need, I, I need to disclose that information, you know, cause your brother may not be in the paving industry right now, but six months from now, he might decide he wants to be.
That have to be done by written or, or just by verbal?
Have to file a written, yeah, right.
We already file ours through the ethics commission.
Correct.
We, we, me?
Meaning council. Meaning council.
Yeah, when you signed up for, when you signed up.
Every year whether.
Well, then.
Every year you have to.
Probably asking about how you stock and public loan trade companies or other boards or something, but I don't, never think about this topic.
Right, and, and we'll, yeah, so it comes up, so.
I'm not trying to be difficult.
No, 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 I, yeah.
Understand it before I.
Right, and, and by the way, um, we have to adopt this every two years, so, so you'll pass an ordinance now, and then in two years, we'll pass another ordinance accepting it again, so.
Just repeat after repeat?
That's, that's right, every two years, that's what the state requires.
Picture of redundancy.
Yep, jumper in our butts.
State will require it every two years.
Do I have a motion to prove the second?
You already had it, and Dean, Dean's second, so now it goes back to roll call.
I'll vote yes.
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 Okay, pass it. Alright.
Sorry.
That's alright. And now we're going to go on to new business, and, well, I don't see Ben Dodson here, so. There is talk of a concert, country concert, but I guess when Ben has chance, we'll hear on that, so we're going to go ahead and move on to the bill two thousand twenty-five ten, and.
What happened to the country concert?
We don't know, Ben's not here.
We couldn't get a hold of Ben to see if he would, was going to be here, Ben, Ben, so just to give you some idea, uh, Ben called the office, uh, was asking questions about wanting to host a, a concert in two thousand twenty-six, we gave him what our process was, and, uh, that, that, and he asked to get on the council agenda to talk about it, um, and. Yeah, so, so, but I think he may be going another route with, with the concert perhaps, so.
That there is a ball game tonight that he could be busy with.
And that, that could be right, that's right, that's right, so, either way, I don't, I don't think it wasn't a matter of his fault, it just, we, we just wanted, we just wanted to make sure that he had a place on the agenda, should he, should he decide that he wanted to address it, so.
We're going to move on to the second reading, water and sewer?
Uh, no, you, this will be, uh, so this is going to be a little bit convoluted here, you'll have to have a motion and a second to do the first reading.
No. First and second reading, sorry. Yep.
And the motion, we do the first reading?
Yep.
Might need to explain it first, or just do it after the first reading?
And then you'll.
No, we need to go ahead and get a motion to get it, and then you read it to us.
Or, well, yeah, he can read it, and then we can do the motion, that's fine, yeah, but you could just wait and read it, whatever, you could talk about it, yeah.
Explain it real quick. Um, so that everybody knows, so this is, this has to do with our, uh, water sewer rebate service plan that we implemented, um, that there was, uh, a few months ago, there was a monthly fee of three dollars for most residential customers using less than seventy-five hundred gallons, and then if you were over, it went to ten, uh, dollars a month, and the, and the plan there was to catch all the residences in the three dollars, the single family residences, and then catch the apartment complexes, trailer, um, courts, and other things that had multiple residences on one meter or used a ton of water. So, like anything, when you go implementing it, sometimes there's kinks that you didn't foresee before, so the way the computer program had to be entered in, whenever somebody used over seventy-five hundred gallons, even if it was just one time, it bumped them up to the ten dollars, so if either somebody had, was filled their swimming pool, or if they had a leak, they would pay ten, that wasn't the intent of the ordinance, the intent of the ordinance was you're always a three dollar, three dollar house, and then it would be on there when you needed it. Um, so, we are going to, we talked about, we're going to remove the ten dollar aspect, everybody will be at three dollars, no matter what, and we are going to trust, and of course, we'll reassess it, make sure there is plenty of money to cover the, the rebates that we need to, um. And then, then the other confusion in it was on, on section one, three, was that, um, the way the deductible was written confused some of the office staff, and it was applied differently than what it was intended also, so. It was supposed, and I don't have to get into what it's supposed to be necessarily, but it, it was supposed to be, you pay your, your, what you'd normally pay for a month, and then you'd pay one additional month as a deductible, but they read it as two additional months, because it was confusing, trying to make it make sense for everybody. So, that was charging some people more to get the rebate than what we intended also, so now we are just removing the deduct, deductible for the sake of simplicity, so if you have a leak, you still show proof that you've repaired it, and by whatever means you can, if you can bring in the bill pictures, or if you can't do either of those, and this, and the water employees need to come out, and you turn everything off in your house, and they see that nothing's leaking, then that, either one of those are fine, then you will, you will just pay, all you will pay is what your average bill is over the past six months, and like you normally would, the rest will be forgiven, the maximum you can be forgiven per year is twenty-five hundred dollars. And that pretty much covers it, except for the next part, so does that make sense, so it's just going to simplify it all, we should, we should have far more, uh, participation and far less confusion for both the public and our staff in City Hall.
I'll make a motion to hear the first reading.
Okay. Mark?
Yep.
Bill?
Does he read it?
Vote to read it?
Yes.
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 Bill number twenty twenty-five dash ten, ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash ten, and ordinance amending ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash oh two, section thirty-eight dash thirty, being the water sewer rebate service plan of the city of Mount Grove, Missouri, you want me to read the full thing, are you all good with the title of it?
I'm making a motion to accept the first reading.
Okay.
Second, is it, Mark?
Yep.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Make a motion first?
Make a motion here in a second.
I got a second.
I'll second.
Alright, Dean, second. Mark?
Yep.
Bill?
Yes.
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 Bill number twenty twenty-five dash ten, ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash ten, and ordinance amending ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash oh two, section thirty-eight dash thirty, being the water sewer rebate service plan of the city of Mount Grove, Missouri.
I'll make a motion to accept second.
Second?
Second.
Second. Mark?
Yep.
Bill?
Yes.
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 Motion passed?
Pass.
Alright. Alright.
Okay, and now, yeah, I'm sorry, Mayor, sorry.
So we are on to, we actually repassed both of those, aren't we?
Need the resolution.
Yep. And now we have the resolution.
Yep.
For the twenty twenty-five zero five.
Yeah, so this is essentially giving us the ability to enact what you just passed, uh, uh, ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash ten, but in here, uh, in, uh, down in the now there for section, uh, bullet two, uh, allows us to implement the revised rebate plan effective tomorrow, September ninth, two thousand twenty-five, but it also, uh, allows us to go ahead and contact those who had already or previously opted out, uh, it allows us the ability to contact them, and, and gives them, uh, through November first, to opt back in, uh, to, to the water sewer rebate service plan, so. I've asked the ladies, Kathy in particular, here, uh, we're going to contact each person that has opted out directly through the phone, so just kind of as a courteous, courtesy to let them know, uh, that they have the ability to opt back in.
Because some, there was a good amount of people who, who opted out because they got bumped up to ten dollars, but they might have stayed in at three dollars.
That's right.
Where the ordinance reads, you have to wait a year if you opt out, so we're going to give them a chance to get back in, then from that point, it would still go back to a year.
Yeah. Yeah, thanks, Zach, yeah.
So you need a motion?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution, second?
Second.
Brandon? Okay, Mark?
Yep.
Yes.
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 Motion passed. Alright, resolution, oh, no, sorry, I messed up there, changing the date of the October thirteenth meeting, we've already actually taken care of that, so we don't, we can mark that off there, and Dakota's going to give us the administrator's report when he's ready.
October sixth was that meeting date. And we'll make sure that it's at, that meeting is October sixth at six P M., apologize for tonight being five thirty, but thanks for accommodating my, my mistakes, so.
Hey, the good thing is. Good thing is, there's a football game on tonight, so we can get a little more of it.
You can get home and watch a little bit more of it, yep.
I just had to throw that out there.
There you go, um, for my administrator's report, before I do anything, if you all will allow me to do something right fast, before I get in here, you all have no idea this is happening, but I've asked Mister Otersky to make sure that he's logged on to YouTube to watch my very first, uh, administrator's report, and tonight would have been Rick's final council meeting, uh, his last day with us is, uh, September nineteenth, so I just, uh, I do better when I write things down, and so I just want to read something, and so, uh, just want to, want to read this, and, and I'm glad that Rick, and I'm going to try to make it through without crying, because, tell you what, Rick's a good guy, a, and, and what he's done for this, this community is, uh, inspiring, uh, and, and I, I hope that I can only do half of what, what Rick's been able to accomplish in his forty-two year career and twenty years here at Mount Grove, so. Rick, glad you're watching, looking at the camera, bud, uh, on behalf of the city of Mount Grove, I want to extend my deepest gratitude to Rick Otersky for his extraordinary service to our community, Rick came out of retirement to step in during a tumultuous time, and his steady leadership helped guide the city through challenges with strength and integrity, I am personally grateful for Rick's confidence in me as I stepped into the role of city administrator, his willingness to stay on longer and ensure I was brought up to speed speaks volumes about his character and his dedication to the people of Mount Grove, one thing has become abundantly clear, Rick loves Mount Grove and its citizens, he told me early on, there were two things I'd learned quickly about him, he always drinks coffee, and he squeaks when he walks, both have turned out to be true, but what stands out most is his heart for service and his unwavering commitment to this community, Mount Grove is better today because of Rick Otersky. His fingerprints are on the progress we've made, and his legacy of service will continue to benefit our citizens for years to come, and as a small token of my appreciation, uh, tonight, I was planning to present Rick with a gift card, so he and his wife can enjoy a well-deserved steak dinner on me, and so. Rick, from the bottom of my heart, and on behalf of all who call Mount Grove home, thank you.
Thank you, Rick.
Alright.
Take that gift card today.
Yeah, I bet you will, yeah, I'm going to personally deliver that, uh, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Dakota asked me if I'd say something, and I did have something written down for you, Rick, but I was running behind on schedule, and so I'm just going to speak it, and, uh, first off, I want to thank you so much for that night when we called you, you showed up in your jammies or whatever you're wearing, uh, we was in a tough situation, but you still showed up, and, uh, I, I will greatly appreciate everything from day one that you came in here, you gave me a chance and taught me so much about who I was going to be for this town, and what I should do for this town, and you showed me the love that you had for this town to push it on to me, so, uh, we've shared a lot of many laughs, guidance, um, vets. And so, I am just, on behalf of myself and the city council, I am just blessed to have gotten to actually work with you and call you my friend, so thank you, and I hope you're getting, feeling better.
Alright, for my administrator's report, I'll run through this pretty quickly here, uh, Dolores and I attended, uh, a sunshine law meeting on September third at Skocov, so, uh, a lot of changes that are coming down the pike on, on sunshine law, uh, so, nice to kind of have a refresher course on that, no one were right and wrong, uh, or otherwise, I was able to meet with, uh, Trent Courtney, Jessica Green, and Jess Moran, all there, uh, this was really just an introductory meeting in which we discussed, uh, past projects for the city, current projects, and then also, uh, making sure that we stay on their radar for any future projects that we want to put on there, so, really, uh, really want to thank Trent, Jessica, and Jess, uh, for that. Uh, I'm going to skip point three, you can see there in my report, I'm going to skip that, uh, because we've already, we've already talked about tabling it, and we've tabled it, um, we had a state inspection on our airport, uh, just for y'all's awareness, uh, we had to put a light and marker on our shut off at the gas tanks in case of emergency, uh, both of those things have been completed, so, uh, so we are good, we're, uh, now in compliance, so, uh, with, with what we know, so, moving forward. Uh, we had a pre-construction meeting with Garver Engineering since we last met, that, uh, so with Garver, uh, MoDOT Aviation, and Courtney Construction at the airport regarding the hangars that are going in, that project has been approved, and they're going to begin construction on that very, very soon, uh, if not, they may already have started that. Uh, Lake Lily Project, as you can see, is obviously off the ground and, and moving, uh, they're cleaning out the existing lake, they're setting the grade of the banks and cleaning up, uh, the area around it, uh, it's, if you haven't been out there by it, we encourage you to get out there and take a look and see, um, a lot of, uh, something I'll address here and perhaps clear up, uh, it, I've gotten a lot of calls on Lake Lily, uh, first of all, uh, wondering if we're going to fully stock it with fish, uh, the answer is no, uh, the city won't be stocking that lake with fish, um, uh, it is, it is just a storm retention, uh, uh, project, uh, so, anyway, but, so I apologize, uh, Chief Bledsoe and Chief Gibb, you can't go out there and fish it, so, anyway, uh, okay, some good news here, something that I'm pretty, pretty proud of, Mohawk Asphalt Paving will begin doing a two inch mill and overlay of Hova Street, uh, they're going to do that from thirteenth all the way to seventeenth, so a pretty high trafficked area there, uh, it will be a four day project, uh, they wanted to close the entire street, and we agreed that that was too high trafficked and too much school traffic through there, so, uh, they're going to have it reduced to just one lane, and do it over the course of, of four days, uh, as opposed to the two, uh, to the normal two days. Um, uh, so, uh, pretty excited about that project, um, have a question for you, uh, as a council, uh, this one, I think, is one that just kept getting pushed, uh, from administrator to administrator, now to your new administrator, um, the fence at the park that runs along the stretch of highway out here, uh, there was a, somebody asked about painting it black, they thought it was supposed to have been painted black, so I just need to know, do you want me to ask the Parks Department to paint that fence black?
I think we're continually having to have it painted.
No.
I want to be.
Hmm?
It's a lot of money, we need to see what the price would be.
For the, for painting it?
Yeah, it's going to surprise you.
Yeah, yeah, well, I, I just, I, before I go through that and, and, and get all that, I just want to make sure that we're all in agreement of wanting to do that, before I go and acquire bids for paint, uh, we'll, we'll paint it ourselves, uh, we, we will, uh, paint it ourselves, but.
I was the one that brought it to him, just because I was here when, uh, ONTC made the fence, um, it was just going to be, uh.
I think we have to probably say that before we paint it and stuff, can we just paint it and make it look decent?
Well, it's going to be a ten thousand dollar ticket to buy all this paint, or more, this, this ain't a hundred dollar job we're talking about.
Just to buy a paint.
Sure.
I mean, it's going to take two coats, and maybe a rust coat plus two finish coats, that's three coats, forget about their time card, but just the paint itself, it's going to add up, and oil-based fence paint is about seventy-five dollars a gallon probably.
It is expensive.
And you only get two hundred fifty feet a gallon of a paint.
So, I mean, I want to know what the number is before I say yes.
If you're lucky.
The number will determine.
Not against the paint, but I'm saying, I'm against ten, twenty thousand dollars.
Okay, sure, sure, yeah.
But we may already know that.
Okay.
That maybe this year's budget is.
It, it, yeah, I'll take a look at the budget, make sure, obviously, the budget was fair before I got here, but I can definitely take a look at it and.
We want to spend that much money on painting the fence before we do anything with our streets.
I, that's for you all to decide.
That's a small budget compared to streets, that's just something that we already started.
I, I can take, guys, I can take a look at the budget and, and, and we can, we can.
So right, right now, we just need to know for painting black.
Yeah, I, I just essentially, sorry.
Painting black.
Yes, ma'am, go ahead, Carmen.
Okay. That, you would have to sand, to do it properly, you're going to have to sandblast.
Correct.
That's quite a bit, but we are looking at a fence, behind this fence, it's not the plantation terror house, we've got ballparks, we got a horse arena, we got a fairgrounds, leave it alone, and just.
We're on the opposite.
I mean, I don't think it looks bad.
I don't think it looks bad.
We're on the fence about the fence.
When you're running into town for that option, it would be a nice.
I mean.
I mean.
So let's just decide if we're going to paint it black or not, and then next meeting, you can bring the numbers, and then we decide.
Yep, so, yeah, there you go.
So I'd say painting black.
Do we have a motion to just go?
Mark said, he made, he made a motion.
I'll make a motion, paint it black. Okay.
My second, then.
Second? Alright, Mark, what do you say? No? No?
Then we'll get to vote again based on what the numbers are, what we're saying, if we can make our final decision.
No.
No, we're just deciding if we're going to paint it or not, simple as that.
Well, no, we're deciding, or paint it black.
Yeah, well, paint it black, sorry, sorry, so we've got Mark, yes, two no's, what do you think, Bill, or, I just want to tell Zach, I'm so sorry.
Yeah, Bill, what do you think there, Bill?
He's been called worse, I'm sure.
If I knew the numbers, I'd be different, but I'm scared.
Don't understand.
Well, I.
So this is not getting approval, it's just the color.
Well, once you pick a color, it slides right into approval right next thing.
Well, no, that'd be.
Because you'll see, you already approved it, all it is is a small.
Doesn't mean we have to do alphabet, it just means we can paint it black, so, what do you say, Zach?
Alright, I'm still confused, but I'll say yes if we can.
Okay. Dean?
But if, if I say yes, we're not going to stay with this, or, because like I said, if it comes back ten thousand dollars, that's something probably.
Right, I think we're just deciding now whether or not I can go get you a bid, but.
I think it's already a business question, no.
You said, say yellow?
Okay, we're in this.
Black is the.
No?
Yes.
How many is that? So who went?
That's right, Jamie's not here.
Jamie's not here, so, we have four yeses and three no's?
Yep.
Okay, well, there it is.
I'll bring your numbers to the next meeting.
So standby for numbers.
Better get your paintbrushes out, because it'll have to be painted every year.
Last time we talked about it, that it was kind of neat how it looks.
Every year.
If it doesn't rust away.
Yeah, that's, well, and I don't know that it rust away, but I, I kind of, I like you, but I don't like it like it would.
Okay.
So, okay.
Alright, I'll continue on, I'm, I've just got two more points here, the downtown bathroom, uh, if you haven't seen, it's behind the farmer's market, if you haven't driven by there, the begin, they're beginning the framing and moving toward completion on that project, so, um, I've kind of got.
I've heard good comments about us having that.
Yeah, uh, likewise, and I want to commend Chad Dunbar for keeping me in the loop, he calls me about once a week to, to keep me posted on where we're at with things, so it's been, been really good, um, that has not always been my experience with contractors in the past, so, appreciate him doing it, yeah, go ahead.
Can somebody give me an answer on this, I don't know, uh, on the bathrooms at the field, they're generally not open, except for what events, are they only during the rodeo, or are they during softball tournaments?
You're talking about the new bathrooms down there?
Yeah.
It generally opens during the events like soccer, when soccer season comes around, they'll open them, football season, but if he, if he leaves them open all the time, the vandalism.
Mighty mides. Oh, I know, I, I totally agree, but they are open during those events, okay, that's a simple answer, then, that's.
Yeah.
That's a part of our process when they come down.
Softball and baseball.
Yep, that's all I need to know, so somebody asked me that, and so, thank you.
Yeah. Uh, bulldog pipe, uh, we've authorized the final payment there, uh, for, for that, so, um, we, where that should draw that project to a close.
Hey, we're getting things paid on.
So, yeah, so, uh, and with that, um, Mister Mayor.
We have no copy of the bills.
Uh, it just came.
She emailed.
It's on another email.
Oh.
You can have mine.
It's not hot link, okay, sorry.
It's alright, here's a bigger lobby.
So if everybody look at the bills and everything, and if you have any questions.
It's a pain or same direction.
Give you a few minutes to look at those bills.
Other thing I might mention, going back to the use tax, I know we, we made a motion to approve that for the, um, April ballot, but we will have to bring you the official ballot. April ballot, but we will have to bring you the official ballot language, uh, as well, and you'll have to vote on that, so just as a reminder there.
I'll be interested in seeing that.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm making a motion to pay the bills. Okay, I got a motion, you got a second, Mark?
Yes.
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 Motion passes, we are paying a bit. So, before we close down, then, uh, guys, this is, look at that.
The, uh, closed session meeting minutes from last thing you get.
Oh, yeah.
Do we have a closed session?
From last meeting.
No, we do not, hey, we don't have a closed session, that means, so I can go with Dale and sit here until midnight, who's all.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay. Uh, Dean did.
I have a motion, a motion to progress.
With this?
Yes.
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 We are done.